I'd like to call this meeting, where we're trusted to be Alabama's meeting, calling the system of service. Welcome here in the morning. Thank you for your presence. Thank you for your interest in the business of our system, business of the state of Alabama. We appreciate your presence. We're honored to have our three weeks today. I'd like to recognize the structure of administrators' association. We just appreciate you all being here today. And welcome. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'll recognize Reverend Shane Eisner, Senior Minister for First Christian Church of Montgomery, to give our invocation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here and for your public service. Will you please join me in the spirit of prayer or reflection, whichever is your one? Grace is in the details, O God of wonder, Spirit of life. Grace, that curious gift of joy despite hardship, hope despite pain, trust despite loss or struggle, grace is best seen. It's most successful in the details of our everyday, not merely in the big moments or grand pronouncements. Sure, we can and are often distracted by chasing rainbows or concocting elaborate schemes, but sometimes we just focus on putting one foot before another in the slow march of progress, read another dry report, negotiate another complex lease, study another strategy for best maximizing value. If we didn't attend these details, we'd feel less tired, more calm, but we wouldn't serve as effectively those who were called to serve, wouldn't employ as diligently the trust were given by others, and therefore lives would be diminished, and students overlooked, and futures not seized with fullness. Grace is in the details. The holy attention we pay to being responsible, to loving well. So, thank you for public servants attending details today. May they do so effectively, proudly, wisely, and gladly in hopes of a better community. May their grace shine brilliantly, brightly, and true. Thus we pray, in whatever name we know you best, confident that all prayers offered in love find the way home. Amen. Thank you.
We'll now stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay. The end of this pledge. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator, will you please call the President?
President.
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 Item four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Chairman, at the end of today's meeting, the amended, adding two action items under the first and second items. The first edition of the act item nine, A1, Jefferson State Community College Recommendation for President, and the second of the act two, Ingram State Department of College Recommendation. At this time, I'll enter a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Troy. Any discussion? There being none, we move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes of the May ninth, 2018 meeting. All board members who received these minutes in advance at this meeting had a chance to review them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the May ninth meeting. Minutes.
Minutes.
Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Foyle. Any discussion? There being none, we move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the May ninth, 2018 meeting, see if you have a raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. We have three people signed up for public comment, and Mr. Bill Gillespie, Mayor Prattville, Mr. Jay Thompson, Chairman of the Ottega County Commission, Mr. Troy Stubbs, Chairman of the Elmore County Commission, and if there's no objection from the board, I will defer these individuals' comments until the action item that they are here to address, which is item eight, A4. Moving on to the action items. Item seven, A1, upgrade technology infrastructure at Lawson State Community College. This was on our work session last month. Board members had time to review this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on item seven, A1. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Troy. Any discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the upgrade of technology infrastructure at Lawson State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, item eight, A1, bookstore operation agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble, Wallace State Community College, Hansfield. Once again, this was on last month's work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on that item.
Yes.
And a motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion? Once again, we have good discussion on this at the work session. I think it's thoroughly explained, questions were answered, if there were any. Seeing no further discussions, this time I'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the Barnes &amp; Noble bookstore operation agreement at Lawson State Community College, Hansfield, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A2, implementation of the testing fee at Sneed State Community College, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McInally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the implementation of the testing fee at Sneed State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A3, increase in dormitory boarding fees at Sneed State Community College, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second by Mr. McInally.
Any discussion? There being none, we move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the increase in dormitory boarding fees at Sneed State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item four, lease of Frats Mill Shopping Center facility for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, is there anyone here to speak on these items? Mr. Gillespie, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Stubbs. Roger, do you want to explain these leases? You're ahead. Mr. Bates.
Well, by way of introduction, let me just say first of all how much all of us who have been a part of working on this project, and I'm sure our dear friends from Prattville, Ottega County, and Elmore would echo this, and I speak to you on behalf of President Burrows as well, thank you for taking this matter today and addressing it. Time was somewhat of the essence because we're trying to get into this facility in August for the fall semester. What you have before you is the result of some significant negotiations that have gone over a period of time for a six-year lease in this facility. It will be completely built out space by the landlord so that we will basically move into it as built. Ed Watley has been a part of working with me to make sure that we address and make sure that the scope of that build-out, although we can't be involved with it, we do have authority to specify some life safety issues and code requirements and those things that meet our quality standards and safety standards for our students. Now, I want to assure you that those items are being addressed, and Ed and I have addressed that with the architect, Ed will be addressing it with the builder as well. The landlord has been most gracious in working with us on this. It's been a long time coming, and I think I'm going to let the community speak for itself about their desire for this, but I'm glad to answer any specific questions you might have about the lease document itself, which I've been in negotiations with, with the owner of this facility. Any question?
Well, thank you. I just cut my thirty minutes down to three minutes, I believe. So, well, first off, I want to say thank you to everybody here on the board, you know, for serving your positions. I know serving at the local level is not always easy, but I can only imagine how difficult it can be from time to time serving at the state level. Also, I'd like to say thank you for having this opportunity to speak, but also for all the hard work and dedication Dr. Susan Burrows and company has showed toward this project, along with Amy Bravam and Lisa Finley, working together on such an important project for this whole area. You know, it hasn't been too many months ago, it seemed like, that we all met in Millbrook at the Landarc, and we built that location up and had a big discussion there. As mentioned earlier, it's been a long time coming. I think it's going to be very beneficial to the whole area, to the whole region, as we continue to grow. But, you know, in our area, in Daniel Pratt's area, foundations and partnerships were so important. He's really approved that, you know, community in there in the eighteen hundreds, everything he's been able to accomplish and been able to move that forward from there. But, you know, while no one person can do everything, but one person can make a difference, or an entity can make a difference. And I believe that if this project is moved forward, it will make such a very positive impact for the whole area. We have such a great location and great people, and I think it's just the right fit at the right time for the right location. As I mentioned earlier, Daniel Pratt, he has set the foundation for success, and our partnerships throughout the region is self-evident. Prattville is in two counties that were previously mentioned, we're in both Ottega County and Elmore County, and our area is growing. It's growing. There is a need for this project. Prattville is set for this project, we're ready to get behind it if this board chooses to move forward with it. Prattville also, in the whole area, we have industry coming back to life, and that's one area that really Daniel Pratt helped find with birthplace of industry because of Daniel Pratt. And we lost some of that industry for a while, but it's starting to come back. We have some big projects, James Hardy Corporations coming in, just for one example, and two-hundred-plus jobs, there's a lot of workforce development that needs to be done. Also, we have our hospital, you know, some healthcare, life is so-so important to us all, and the project here, I think, can benefit not only our community, but so many others that dwell in that one. But as I mentioned, the James Hardy International Paper, Kennedine, but all of this is going to take training, workforce development training, and the quality of life and workforce development is the key, key to success. Key to keeping our sons and daughters at home, you know, whether that's in Ottega County, Elmore County, Millbrook, Prattville, county of Elmore, or so many other regions that we call homes throughout this area. You know, if our region is chosen, and I hope that you will choose it, you will have an abundance of support. You'll have an abundance of young, talented people needing to be trained, needing that education, and we have some industry coming up that does need that workforce development. Education is so important to us all because it is a part of quality of life. It's helping communities throughout to bring new jobs, new families together, and it does bring a bright future to us all. But I want to thank you for this time, for this consideration. Our future is bright, and I look forward to working with this board, with this project for many, many years to come. And you do have my complete support and commitment from the city of Prattville. Any questions? That's my comments today. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would leave the dials. I think it's important to note that Alabama may have invested or are making investment in this project for the city and the community.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're working at this as a overall, I know you guys have to really look at every project from a forty thousand-foot view, we're trying to look at it as that as well, and trying to make this a very viable project, because as we all know, no matter where you're living, in a business world or government world, it does take dollars. It takes people, it takes equipment, and all that equates to funding. And so, we're willing to be a partner in any way that we possibly can, and there's been a lot of hard work, the sum I've already mentioned before, and it's, I think that this project is ready to be, to find a home. Short-term, long-term, and hopefully that it will be a long-term investment for us all in this area. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Ottega County Commission about the importance of action item number four on the agenda today. As a look at the future growth of our area, a most important topic that any of us can discuss is workforce and job creation. I know the importance of this as an educator in the past, upon the technology center, and so there's a desperate need in our area for this. Our area has been fortunate to receive, been recipient of existing industry growth and investments from our current companies and large future industry partners coming to our area. With that success comes the absolute need for post-high school training. Our commitment to working with our newly-existing industry is so important to the Ottega County Commission. We plan to commit funds to the location and continue to support the future of this project at Central Alabama Community College. We want to give area citizens the opportunity to be the best that they can be, and to be able to be trained and have the skills necessary for automation, healthcare, and other areas to obtain the new opportunities coming to the community. This partnership between our local communities gives the entire area future opportunities of James Hardy, Building Products, International Paper, Tenaska, Emre Industries, Prattville Baptist Hospital, and many other businesses in the community. I'd like to thank you for your consideration and allowing us to partner with Central Alabama Community Cores and further the opportunities of our local partners. Any questions?
Thank you for being here, Commissioner.
I know the mayor took a lot of time, so I thought people were in there. (Laughter).
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and trustees. It's a privilege to be here today to represent Elmore County. My name is Troy Stubbs. I serve as the Chairman of the Elmore County Commission, and I feel that it's very important that projects like this move forward. We view from a county commission perspective that there are three pillars to a successful community. Those are education, infrastructure, and economic development. And when those three areas are successful, we find that a community has an improved quality of life, we have retention in our community, and we're able to provide our citizens with quality jobs and opportunities for not only those living there now, but future residents and people who may be moving into our communities. Elmore County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Alabama. We've seen tremendous growth both in population and in economic development in our area in the recent past. We find that our education system is growing, and they're doing a tremendous job in the elementary and secondary education areas. As a former educator, I taught math at Wheatonka High School for several years, and I value education. I have four children, and I feel that education and specifically training, technical training and other areas are vital to a community's success. We view from an Elmore County perspective that this location that has been chosen will serve as a central location for the entire Ottega-Elmore County location. We have a lot of citizens who will benefit from this, both the daytime opportunities to learn and the nighttime classes that may be available. Elmore County served several years ago as the starting point for the Community College actions in Central Alabama. Specifically, the city of Millbrook, the Elmore County Commission, and the Elmore County Board of Education started the classes at Stan Hope Elmore High School offered by Central Alabama Community College. And we feel that that catapulted this project and got us moving to the point that we're at today. And we hope that with the approval of this project, we as a county commission will encourage enrollment, and we hope that in the years to come, we will see an improved enrollment in the area, and that will lead to more opportunities down the road for a larger, more permanent location that will serve the citizens of our growing area in Elmore County and Ottega County. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I welcome any questions.
All right, so much. Thank you very much. At this time, we thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gillespie, and Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Stubbs. We appreciate your encouragement, your support, your collaboration, and appreciate your comments, and especially appreciate your presence here today at our meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Foyle. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving the lease of Frats Mill Shopping Center Facility for Alabama Community College System, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? I saw the action items were item nine, personnel, chancellor.
This is a little late. I think the last time this person was not here, but I did want to introduce a new employee in our office, Carver Jones. Yes, there he is. Glad to have you onboard. Our new financial operation. I've got a wealth of experience in the world that we really need as we are moving forward with changing our whole financial operation. I think more of those to come, we're going to have to really be changed. With that, I would like to also ask Michelle, where's Michelle?
I would like to make two recommendations, permanent appointments of people who fill our college. And in both cases, these people have proven themselves to be good managers, good leaders, and very committed to the proposition that they improve the college's mission. And they have extended experience in that arena, and so I'd like to move forward today with the appointments of both Ingram and Jeff State Community College, or permanent presidents. I'd ask Michelle if you would kind of give us a brief resume of the two individuals, and let's just take one at a time and then vote and take the other.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Keith Brown. Keith Brown is no stranger to the Jefferson State Community College family. His relationship with Jeff State began over thirty years ago as a first-generation college student. He served Jefferson State since then for nearly twenty years, most recently as interim president. Prior to his role as interim president, he served as Dean of Campus Development and Campus Legal Services, and has spent time in the classroom as a business law instructor. And in addition to his service to Jefferson State, he also serves the Alabama Air National Guard as a Colonel and Staff Judge Advocate. Mr. Brown has an Associate of Arts degree from Jefferson State, a Bachelor's Degree in Juris Doctorate from the University of Alabama. He is also trained at the U.S. Air Force Air War College. Mr. Brown's commitment to Jefferson State, expanding and maintaining partnerships with community leaders, business and industry, educational institutions, and elected officials, makes him an ideal candidate to serve as the next president of Jefferson State Community College.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend Keith Brown to become permanent president of Jefferson State Community College. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Foyle. Any discussion? There being none, I would like to say that both Ms. Foyle and Mr. Van Troy anticipated that it would be processed with Mr. Davis. Any other comments? Any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor of Mr. Keith Brown as president of Jefferson State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
You know, I'm not an emotional person, but this is an emotional day. I would like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, for this opportunity and the confidence that you place in me to lead this great institution. I'd like to thank our faculty and staff back at the college. They've supported me for the last forty years as interim, and we haven't missed a step. And I would be remiss, too, if I didn't thank those who served before me, in particular, Judy Merritt and Joe Morris, who established this great institution and gave me so much to work with when I took the reins even as interim. I'd like to acknowledge now my family. I have a couple of members here with me, and I'd like to introduce Kathy Brown, my wife of almost nineteen years. We've been, we started dating almost thirty years ago, and I finally wore her down. She's a Jeff State alum and was a cheerleader back when we had cheerleading, basketball and athletics, more athletics at that time, so. And sitting next to her is my son Tyler Brown, who's a rising senior at Leeds High School. He's also a dual-enrollment student at Jefferson State. Just now, this summer, he's taking English 102, which will be his ninth credit hour with us once he completes that, so. And incidentally, he was down here in Montgomery already. He holds statewide office for the FCC LA, and they are having their conference down here, so I just went by the hotel and picked him up. He's already a leader in his own right, so. But again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the confidence. I look forward to many great things to come at Jefferson State. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend Annette Fundabert to become permanent president of Ingram. Ms. Annette Fundabert began her public service career as a county administrator in two counties in the state of Alabama. She served ten years with the Alabama Community College System Office in a variety of positions, private school licensure, governmental affairs, and most recently Director of External Affairs. She moved on into her position as interim president of JF State Ingram Technical, JF Ingram State Technical College, where she served since February of 2017. Ms. Fundabert received her Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration with a minor in Mass Communication from the University of Montebala. Her certificate in governmental accounting from Auburn University in Montgomery. She also received a Master's in Public Administration from Troy University. Ms. Fundabert's passion about correctional education and its importance and impact on Alabama's workforce is vital and certainly essential. Her commitment to developing business and industry is also vital to the growth of Alabama, along with her work within the political arena. All of that combined makes her the ideal choice to serve as the next president of JF State, JF Ingram State Technical College. Ms. Fundabert? We have a force of recommendation for the Chancellor for Ms. Annette Fundabert to become the permanent president of JF Ingram State Technical College. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we accept the Chancellor's recommendation and that Fundabert is president.
Motion by Mr. Van Troy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? I believe Mr. Van Troy served for the community of the trust. Thank you, Mr. Keith. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving Ms. Annette Fundabert as president of JF Ingram State Technical College, please raise your hand. as president of J.F. Ingram State Technical College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
President Brown was certainly correct. This is an emotional day. Chancellor, I appreciate you. I appreciate your support. Mr. Chairman, board members, presidents, staff, and guests. Ingram State is a unique institution among all of our colleges in this great system, and it is a privilege and honor for me to assume the role of the leader of this institution. I'm humbled by your confidence, and I thank you all for your support. I pledge a full measure of effort to guide the college and promote its mission as we seek to serve this system and the great state of Alabama. I appreciate our faculty and staff at Ingram, what they mean to not only me, but our students every day. We have successes each and every day, and those are because of our faculty and staff there. Many of you here mean so much to me and have played an important role in what is taking place today, and I appreciate you. I appreciate my family. My husband Ken is here with me today. Their support for me is essential, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Ed, if he will come. I wanted to kind of update the board on a project that we had ongoing for some time at Calhoun, as we've had some little bumps along the way, so I'd like to kind of catch you up on that.
Last month, we asked for approval, revised approval for bucket logic and timeline of Calhoun Automotive Technology Building. And since that meeting, we met with a representative of the U.S. Department of Commerce to better understand the grant requirements and what it would take to actually administer and receive, we'll then bid on that grant. And since that meeting, we've learned that we need to take a step back and modify our contract documents to the point that those documents will need to be redid. So we are in the process of redidding and revising those documents that will be approved by the grant administrator of the Department of Commerce. They will then be approved by the Alabama Building Commission. And I hope to, in July or August, bring another and hopefully final action of the board's consideration to actually pursue this grant.
I'd just like to say, I spent a couple different half-hour sessions this round, and I did, learning a lot about this, and in my professional practice, I deal with these types of things often. And I will say that I think every effort was made to gain as most knowledge as possible about this grant, what had to be included in the documents. And a lot of items were included in the documents, but the granting authority chose not to allow us to have everything before that time. So it's really unavoidable to be where we are. I think it's the proper path. A lot of work has gone into getting us to where we are, and I thank you for that.
Even instructions essentially do our own personal, and it must cost us some time on this project, and we are going to, I believe, make a responsive decision to take the time to do that.
Thank you, Ed. Jeff, would you come forward? I've asked Jeff to make a presentation. It's one of them. This presentation is something that we're implementing system-wide, software, and other things to help our local schools deal with a variety of things that they're having to deal with. And after you've seen this, then I'll take a few other comments, why we're doing this. This is presented to all the presidents, or maybe most all the presidents. I think we had a president's meeting, it was pretty good Monday, and social presentations were there. Other than that, a lot of more head conversations. So if you will, Jeff, kind of go a little further.
Sure. Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Chairman of the board, members of the board, thank you so much for all the things you're allowing us to do across the state in workforce development. These are a couple additional tools that will really outfit our colleges and will be another leader in the nation by doing these two things. And so I'm going to kind of go into them. Please stop me at any time. I've got a couple of videos to kind of extract a couple of things. So it's missing one of the slides, but anyway, so MC Software is a leading software to help us with a lot of different things. And over the past year, year and a half, they've done a lot of different things, and we're actually forging a partnership with them to do some other pilots that they're not doing within the college. They work with all two-year, four-year colleges across the state. Economic developers use them a lot of times. We chose to use Jobs EQ when I first got here, because Jobs EQ had lead, had led some of the things that they were doing. But now, MC is doing some amazing things, especially at the college level. So these tools that we're going to be rolling out across the state are for academic courses and workforce courses. And it also led us to, led all of our college presidents and their teams to be the experts with prospects coming to town, when they're meeting with business and industry, when they're meeting with the regional workforce councils, et cetera. So there's three areas that we're purchasing. There's the analyst area, there's the career coach, and we'll have more exciting news about career coach next month at the board meeting, and then also the alumni insight. And that's a really critical factor for outcome-based funding. And so finally, we'll have some tools that we desperately need to really find out, what is our alumni doing, and how can we reach them to further their education if they need to. So this is just the analyst piece here. So this is the, the section that kind of indicates the hiring and the employment data. It's very easy to use, do it yourself. We're going to have free training for, across the state. We're picking up the cost at the system level for every pilot, so we've worked out a very, very good deal statewide. We'll also have super users across the state provide training for them. The next slide should go into a video to kind of explain it a little bit. Maybe I'll show you later. I'm just going to skip to the next one. So, so the career coach here is the, yeah, let me, I'll do it. I don't know why. Anyway, so I'll just keep going without the PowerPoint slide. So the next section is the career coach section. What this does, it gives us career information for all of our students, so every one of our students will be able to create a platform and go in there and look at for different programs that they have to offer. And just, you can go ahead. Thank you. It also helps us map out occupations, it looks at different career assessments from job postings, et cetera. This is a tool that every one of our students will be able to use. This is going to integrate some other things in where we can actually, once we load some data locally, our students even in the high schools. So this will help us increase our enrollment through high school dual enrollment, both academic and workforce, and also increase our enrollment for other students that are seeking a career. And so we're very, very excited about that. I don't know if the video's going to work on this. And then the last one, before I go to the next one, is this, the alumni program. This is the one that's going to track all of our alumni that's come through our colleges. This is really critical, as you know, working through, especially Blake, working through, Mr. McAnally, working through the outcome-based funding with the team. This is really a great tool that we are able to track all of our alumni, find out where they are, what are they making, and those different things about trying to get them back into college. I think this is going to be a great tool also to help me with a lot of articulation programs with those four-year schools across the state as well, so we can start mapping out these programs as well. Last but not least, I want to just go to the last slide. Let's see, the Amitral slide. We've actually worked a deal with Amitral. Amitral is a leader in technical training, both really equipment, that's where they got their start, but now they do, they're phenomenal in curriculum development, so they have new planning packages. The only other state that has a statewide is Ivy Tech in Indiana. They have one community college for the whole state. So we're actually going to offer this at every college. Every college will be able to skin it at their college and sell it, both academically and workforce-related, both in high school and in normal student population. So we've worked out a really good deal with them to purchase a statewide license, so we'll be rolling that out. And I know that we'll probably have this in Pratt Bowl in August, just in any building. So along with some other things, I talked with Dr. Burrow this week and stuff, so we're excited about rolling this out to help our, our population and all of our workforce in training across the state. So I'll pause there. Apologize, they had the wrong one loaded there, so that's why it didn't work. Any questions?
Is there a link on our system website for MC? Are they supposed to be accessible to all the students?
Yeah, so what it'll be is, it'll be a link to each college website. So it's going to be specific to the college in that region. So what we'll do is, we'll go behind and build all the data that shows the regional jobs in those areas, and we'll typically, you know, go around the company, then they can go into the state. So it'd be a link on our website at ACCS, but more importantly, for the students to go into their own website at the college of choice. Good question.
Office.
Yes, yeah. So we're real excited about that.
Well, part of all this is to help everybody. If we're going to, not even, as we compete in the market, to attract more students, more adults, and more people, whatever the age may be, into an environment where they can be provided more tools to compete in the labor market. And if we're going to be competitive, we have to be in a position to know what's going on. We have to be in a position to offer what should be offered. And literally, the only way to do a lot of that is through advanced technology. As we move toward that, it's going to force a lot of change in every school. It's going to force a lot of change in every classroom. It's going to cause us to move into the future instead of, as some places may still be operating as they did twenty-five years ago. It's just reality, if we're going to be in tune with what's happening tomorrow and the next generation, we're going to have to be with current. We watched yesterday, most of the presidents said, give them more demonstration of virtual and augmenting reality. The risk we run is not being current and being updated, and high schools are doing that now. And if we aren't ahead of the curve, then we're going to suffer as a college. We're not going to be offering what needs to be offered. So that comfortable environment where you use the same notes, the teach that you did twenty-five years ago, and you go to the classroom occasionally, and then you show up, teach, and go home, or whatever the job assignment you have, may be changing, and we all need to be prepared to accept the fact that things are going to change. Now, the other side of that, it's going to take all of us working together to figure out how to make that best work. And as we move forward, there'll be a lot of questions, and a lot of comments, and a lot of observations. But in addition to that, there must be positive input from everyone about how we design a system to not just be competitive. I'm only happy if we're leading the country as a community college system, and we can only do that if we are meeting the needs of the communities we serve. So as we move forward, college presidents are going to certainly lead the way, but they're going to lead the way for their staff and faculties as we move into a different area, a different arena, and a different day in how we manage our schools and how we deliver instruction. If you think I'm just talking, spend some time looking at what's out there in the market and what's being used in a lot of the schools. And I'm not satisfied, I don't believe this board is satisfied with anything except excellence. And as we move forward, it's going to take all of us working hard and working together and being in tune with what's happening to achieve the excellence that I think we're capable of doing. This is just another tool, you'll see more and more of this becoming available, and we at the central office, we're providing this across and making a common system along with the ERP, so that everyone and every one of our schools have access to the tools that we think they need to move forward.
Yeah, and I gave, I gave you a copy, so you should have a copy. This is just a list of the modules. It is over eleven hundred modules that we can train. So basically, any industry in the state, plus aspirational companies we're trying to attract to the state, we can now take care of them, all of their training needs at the colleges. And then last but not least, we're actually hosting the National Manufacturing Skills Standards Council, they're down at Point Clear. I left them in good hands this morning, I'll see them this afternoon, but we're hosting them. And other national leaders across the state in workforce, so they're all down at Point Clear, come into Alabama and see what we're doing. So thanks for all your support. Thank you.
Jeff, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Is this going to augment or integrate with the Apple initiative in any way?
Absolutely. It's, it's actually coincides with that, so it's not going to do the same thing, so that's kind of a different initiative. This is more technical training with regards to more, you know, mechanical, electrical, hydraulics, et cetera, where the Apple is more just coding. I think you're going to see some more coding things that we're doing. We're doing some things across the state in the pilots right now. There's some things that we're working with Trinum on in Montgomery as well. So Huntsville, Trinum, O'Gill, those are some of the big pockets, as well as some of the things that the new mayor's doing in Birmingham.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
I read and saw something this past weekend that made me stop and look at it. It was a school, and they had on their signage board a list of every school or every industry their students were going to for this program. And unfortunately, I saw Auburn, Georgia Tech, Georgia, never saw Alabama. Then it listed all the manufacturers of businesses they were leaving, going into. And it really was an attention getter. So presidents, anybody think about it? Works or not, but it lets the public know where they're going through it too.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Chris.
Good presentation. Thank you. Chancellor finds for your vision and finds for the vision of your staff for looking ahead and keeping us ahead of the curve. We will host, once we adjourn the regular meeting, we'll go straight into our work session. Anyone who's here and doesn't even want to be at the work session is agreed to exit, but we'll move straight into it because it's past ten forty-five, starting. Our next regular meeting of the board will be in this room, July eleventh, at ten a.m. Any, any other comments from the board? Mr. Newman, anybody else say anything? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, if the notions are second. All in favor, say aye. Stand adjourned.